Gentlemen, this evening we'll start our meeting for December 20, 2016 with a public hearing, RLE property corporation annexation agreement. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Present. Thank you.
Mr. President, before we proceed, I'd like the record to reflect that I'll be abstaining from this public hearing.
Also, I have to recuse myself from that also.
Very good. Do we need them?
That's up to you whether you stick around or not.
We're not going to have any comments whatsoever.
Just a public hearing, but then don't comment on it.
Okay, so just for the record, trustee Ranky and trustee Danny are recusing themselves from the public hearing for conflict of interest. With that, I will turn it over to our community development director.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the required public hearing for RLE of Bartlett's annexation agreement. The property is located on the north side of Lake Street in what we used to know as the old Motor Homes Unlimited and property and way back, the Hoot, Toot and Whistle site that Harry Blizzard owned. But that goes way back. This is required public hearing for their annexation agreement of 6.48 acres of property at 1180 Lake Street. The annexation agreement public hearing notice was published in the Daily Herald in the required time on December 5, 2016. I have proof of notice for the record, and if there are any questions, the petitioners, attorney and project manager are both here in the audience, so if there's any questions on this, I'll be glad to answer them or defer to them.
Thank you, Mr. Lenzinski. Does the board or anyone in the audience have any questions regarding this public hearing? Hearing none, I will consider the public hearing concluded, and I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Entertain a motion to end the public hearing.
Still moved.
Only have three of you. Moved by trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Public hearing is adjourned. For December 20, 2016, I call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cammerer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We've requested Pastor Andy Doyle from Christ Community Church through our invocation this evening. Pastor Doyle?
Bow our heads, I pray. Father God, we thank you for the gift of Jesus, which we remember this Christmas time, and your name means God with us. It also means prince of peace. So, Father, I pray that people here today in our own lives, also people in Bartlett, Lord, would know you as prince of peace. Father, you take away despair and replace it with hope for the year ahead. I pray you bless our time together this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Doyle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next item we have this evening is our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on the items on the consent agenda. That being said, is there anything any board member would like to add to the consent agenda or remove? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes, the board and committee minutes from December 6, 2016. The bill's list, December 20, 2016. That is it for the consent agenda this evening.
Still moved.
Second. Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Cammerer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's? I'm sorry. Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item this evening is our treasurer's report, and I believe our treasurer has some information for us. Todd?
Yes, thank you. In your packet is the October treasurer's report, and we will be going over that more in our six-month review during the committee meeting. Also to report is motor fuel tax received $79,000 in October, and sales tax is also $209,930 for the month. That was up $3,000 from the same month prior year, which is a slight increase of just under 2%.
Any questions for the treasurer?
I have a quick question. The motor fuel tax gets paid back to us from the state from gasoline sales that happen in our village, correct?
Motor fuel tax is distributed on a per capita basis based on our population.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Next item we have this evening is the president's report, and I believe that our chief of police has a brief presentation for our National Night Out award. Chief Williams.
Well, good evening, Mayor.
I thought you were going to dance or something, or?
I'm sorry?
You were going to dance, or?
I was going to dance.
Go eat that.
Dance. We're in trouble. Maybe a little later. It's my humble honor, and quite frankly, I goosebumps. I'm so excited. I've been a police officer for the Village of Bartlett for 32 years. I've been your chief for five, and about 27 years ago, under the tutelage of Chief Bill McHugh, we started a program called National Night Out. And at that point, it was a news release that we put out that said, "Please turn your lights on on your porch to show your community support for a crime-free community and an involved community." And we did that, and we were surprised how many lights were turned on, and we said, "Wow, this is a pretty special community that takes its safety and its pride and its community for..." It doesn't take it for granted. So, boy, it's grown since then. It really has, to the point now where we are perennial go-to community for how you build community interaction, how you build community partnerships. And I get phone calls on a weekly basis, "How do you do it?" And I say, "Well, it's not science. It's an art, and ultimately, it comes down to relationships." And we are truly blessed to have some of the best at spearheading those relationships and a board that is supportive of those relationships and a mayor and a manager who over the years has, quite frankly, demanded those relationships. And her mantra has always been, "If we're going to do it, we're going to do it the Bartlett way," which means it's going to be the best, and we're going to get the biggest bang out of the buck we can for it. And that's become our mantra. That's become our marching orders, and I just wanted to show you a brief video of this year's event. And I think it's okay for us to take this moment and celebrate because this is a true community event. While we tend to get the credit for it, for being the ones who spearheaded and put the report together and run it, none of this is possible without everybody sitting in here today. It's truly a reflection of every director of every department and every person sitting at the dais this evening and certainly our managers. So with that, if it'll work, and usually it doesn't, we're going to give it a try.
(laughing) Yeah, that's me, Aaron.
The Village of Bartlett has participated in National Night Out for, I think, 20-some years now. It's just a great opportunity to have all the residents come out and socialize together in one big event. Just been a fantastic opportunity for the Village of Bartlett to build more community.
I love it because I get a chance to see a lot of families, a lot of kids who are out here enjoying themselves. It puts a good face on law enforcement, too. They see a better side of you. It brings you a little closer to the community.
Lets us know that they're residents and people just like the rest of us.
We appreciate everything that they do, and that in turn makes the community stronger as a whole.
I believe it's an opportunity to showcase the police department and let people see the individuals that are caring and concerned about our residents and that work to protect and serve all of us in this community.
National Night Out, to me, and why I'm involved in it every year, is because it brings the whole community together. It offers things for really all ages. You have seniors here, you have little children here, and what you guys do to bring everybody out here is amazing.
Best part is to see the numbers of people that are here. It is wonderful. Every year, they seem to grow in numbers. I was here 23 years ago when this started, and they did a great job, and we said, "Well, how can they top this?" And every year after, this force comes up with another idea that's just as good as the one before and makes the next team work just as hard.
We love it. We come every year with the family and the kids and stay the whole night. Especially the Guinness Record this year was great.
Another beautiful night in Bartlett Park. We have generations of kids here who are now grown up and have their own kids, and they're still coming. We're very indebted to the National Night Out program, and it's really always served us as a blueprint of how we can mold these relationships that are so important to a safe
This is a great opportunity for us to come together, to comfort and reassure each other, the community, the police department.
The turnout for National Night Out is just wonderful here, and the work that the Bartlett Police do to put on this event is just remarkable. It really is.
You know, the relationship between the police department and the school is really important because this is our community outreach, and I know our school resource officer now, Officer Bosch, that's that friendly face and something that can work for a positive, and we always want to be able to have our students be able to feel like that they are part of the community, that they can go to the police, they can go to our school resource officer, and really put a face to if there is something that they need in the future, that they actually have that personal connection.
People are excited, and the weather has held off. It's going to be a lot of fun, a perfect celebration of our National Night Out.
Great turnout, a lot of people, awesome community. We're so glad to be here, and everybody's excited as well.
I think it's great exposure for businesses. It's fun to get the kids out and get them active.
Bartlett cheer loves National Night Out!
National Night Out is another safety night that we can come out, enjoy our neighbors, enjoy the kids having a good time. People that live in this town are very family-oriented, very community-oriented, and they get involved with just about everything. That's why everybody's here tonight.
Really, I think it's just an opportunity as an organization for us to be able to give back to the communities and come out and rub shoulders with some people and be able to have the conversations with them about safety and, you know, protecting home and family.
National Night Out was a great time. We had so much fun. We gave away tons of prizes. It was a really awesome time for everybody.
This is the biggest one I've seen so far.
We socialize, and everybody getting along good.
I walked in, the first thing I said today is, "I can't believe how big this has gotten. This is incredible." I work a full-time, seven-day-a-week schedule, and I wanted to come back for this because this is honestly one of the best events that I'm a part of. I love my hometown, what can I say?
(laughing)
(inaudible).
Good? So with that... (applause) With that, I think it's time to announce, once again, the Village of Bartlett is rated number one in the nation. There were thousands of communities that put in for an award this year, and once again, we are proud to announce that the Village of Bartlett came up number one in the entire country. Congratulations to everybody in the world.
Picture, 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 picture.
Oh, picture.
Good job.
Let the police do the...
Officer in the room, please come on up.
Let's have you in the middle here. You can kind of...
Yeah, we've been multiple number ones. Yeah, we've been tops. This is our sixth number one in the nation. Sixth number one. This is our most recently. This is one of the more competitive ones. Before we take pictures, I'd like to just put a little cherry on top, and before I do that, I'd like to... We have points of contact on everything we do. This year, it was Commander Jeff Riquellos and Officer Flores who are our points of contact. (applause) As you can see, but as you can see, that is truly a community-wide event, so I'd like you guys to step up and as a cherry on top, as if we couldn't ask for any more. This year, let me just read this. This was just delivered from the Guinness Book of World Records. This is a Guinness Book of World Records, a certificate. The most people blowing train whistles simultaneously is 1,569, achieved by the Village of Bartlett, USA, and Bartlett, Illinois, USA on the 2nd of August, 2016. You are world record holders.
I didn't know we had a guy in first place.
Isn't that right?
Yeah.
Hey, good job, Nick.
That's it, meeting over.
Good to see. Oh, thank you so much. What a cool thing. You just did a great job.
We were always coming in second and third. I didn't know we had first places.
We did. Early on, we were winning quite frequently.
Really? Okay. That's amazing. That's what I want to see, winning. You know, the second-place stuff.
Wow.
Thank you, chief. That was a great presentation, and we really appreciate your... Oh, wow, that was impressive.
Yeah. We couldn't have stole that world record from a better state. Before we get into this, I need to add, who prepared that? That was unbelievable. Professionally? By staff? Professional. Very nice job.
All right, very good. That's a tough act to follow, but a nice thing on our president's report is a Class D liquor license for St. Peter Damien Catholic Church. Attached is consideration and application for St. Peter Damien Catholic Church. They look for a Class D liquor license on February 25, 2017. They do this each year. Been reviewed, everything's in order. I entertain a motion to approve the Class D liquor license application for St. Peter Damien Catholic.
Still moved.
Second. By trustee Carbonaro, seconded by trustee Danny. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammerer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Motion carries, and with that in mind, I intend to order issue that license. Next item we have this evening is question-answer. Anybody have any questions at all? Last chance for your Santa's Christmas list.
I just have a comment, if I may.
Christmas list? You're on the naughty list anyway, Ray.
I didn't want to wait till new business because somebody may leave, but I wanted to wish everybody, staff, board members, and the community, all professional services that are offered the village, Merry Cr... Happy Holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thanks, Ray.
And also, I really have to tell you, I've had a number of comments about the Christmas decorations that we finally put up in our village, and it's been positive, so hopefully we can continue with that next year.
Next year, we'll have more of the same.
Thank you very much.
That's great. This way, we can also address some of the annual questions that we have, like why there's no lights on my street and why there's always a four-foot pile of snow at the end of my driveway. But I would just like to say Merry Christmas to the entire room.
Yeah. Very good. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of the meeting this evening. Anyone like to address the board? Please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Would anybody like to address the board at this time?
Richard Z. Frankie, 945 Auburn Lane in Bartlett. I have spoken before in the past few years on the ComEd plan to install smart meters in Bartlett. The future is now. I call your attention to the fact that notification has been made to many, including myself, who have attempted to opt out of this installation. I am not opposed to the smart grid, but that has nothing to do with the smart meters. As an opt-out homeowner, I will be charged $21.53 per month in addition to not take the smart meter. Penalty charge for something that I didn't want to do. It sounds familiar, doesn't it? Just to review, the purpose, as stated by ComEd, is to eliminate meter readers and provide consumers with real-time data about their electronic, electric consumption. In so doing, they will be transmitting use data every few minutes via wireless transmission. Though not stated, this information will then be used in the future to provide variable billing, so that in the peak demand periods, your bill will be higher. Count on this, it will happen. Acing that issue was a recent attempt by ComEd to decommission two nuclear sites in Illinois. Only the persistence of Governor Rauner forced them to postpone it for 10 years. When these two sites are closed, Illinois will be virtually totally fossil-driven power grid. If these issues were not enough to raise a flag, I will add a possibly more complex but serious issue. Though you will be told that the transmission is at 900 megahertz transmission, that in itself is not a problem to human beings. But what is a problem is the other part of the equation. The pertinent issue is the field intensity of the power transmission at the meter. It is roughly 10 to 20 times that of a cellphone held to one's ear while standing eight feet away. This intensity is much closer to... This intensity is much closer to the vice as it varies the square of the distance. It has been shown to cause brain issues and nausea in roughly 5% of people. At the point of comparison, think of this in terms of a radar installation. You do not go in front of a radar installation when it's in operation. It will fry your retinas out of your eyes. Likewise, a microwave oven can be just as dangerous. The problem is, or the solution to that is, it's shielded. These are just some of the extreme comparisons to make a point. If this were happening once a month like a normal meter being transmitted, it wouldn't be a problem, and likely, if it were even happening once a day, it wouldn't be a problem. But it isn't. The transmission will happen every few minutes, combined with the total local area network communications between these other meters on other homes at 2.4 gigahertz. Add to that in a multifamily building where there are as many as 20 meters transmitting, the danger to people living close to those meters is exponentially higher. The transmissions are virtually nonstop, 24/7. Many communities and states have taken independent action on this issue, including locally Naperville and Burr Ridge. I recommend that the Village of Bartlett do their due diligence. Contact and contact them and review with our, with a site called Take Back Your Power. There are cases discussed that will give pause to proceeding. In my opinion, there is no sound reason that any of these devices need to transmit more than one, once a day. At transmission speeds, we are talking about total consumption for the day, and required data transmission can be done in less than five seconds. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Frankie. Could you repeat that website just so we know? Take Back... All right, thank you.
(inaudible).
Thank you.
(inaudible). And there are solutions, but it's only one.
Good to know. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? I like the hat.
I am proof that Santa is a Blackhawks fan. That's all there is to it. Anyway, Merry Christmas to the board. Charlie DeVoe, actually, Santa Charlie, down from the North Pole on Tagi Avenue, 111. That's it. Have a great day. Merry Christmas. And again, I was able to attend the National Night Out and participate in the world record, and it was quite a blast, so thanks again. Good job.
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas.
And again, I was able to attend the National Night Out and participate in the world record, and it was quite a blast. So, thanks again. Good job.
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas. Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to our standing committee reports this evening. Your standing committee reports under Planning and Zoning Committee. Chairman Ranky has a... Has to recuse himself from any of the RLE property corporation items. And I've requested that Trustee Hopkins chair that portion of the Planning and Zoning Committee. So, Trustee Hopkins?
Thank you, President Wallace. Items A 1 through 6, I would like to make a motion to...
See, I think it's five. 1 through 5, yeah.
1 through 6?
1 through 6.
1 through 6, okay. That's also... Okay, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to table those items.
Before you do, Trustee Danny, do you wish to recuse yourself as well?
I'm sorry, sir.
Are you going to recuse yourself as well on this issue, since you recused yourself in the public hearing?
Be the most appropriate thing to do at this time.
So, Trustee Ranky and Trustee Danny are both recusing themselves, which, just so everybody knows, we're required to have five votes on this, and we don't have them this evening because of absences, so...
The only item that requires five votes is the ordinance approving the annexation agreement, but everything follows from that. So, it makes sense, it wouldn't make sense to piecemeal the subsidiary, you know, agreements and things without the annexation agreement.
I agree.
Yep, okay.
I'll make a motion to table items A 1 through 6.
Until... Should we be specific, until the first meeting in January?
Well, that's when it would be if you don't, so...
Okay. First meeting in January.
Motion's made by Trustee Hopkins, seconded by Trustee Kamer. Will clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
No.
I recuse myself.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Kamer?
Yes.
You can call me, too.
I abstain.
President Wallace?
Yes. So, we will table that item. Thank you, Trustee Hopkins, for stepping in on that.
Thank you, President Wallace. That's all we have.
Next item we have is Building Committee. Chairman Hopkins?
There is nothing to report in the Building Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item we have, understanding committee reports, is under Finance and Golf Committee. Chairman Danny.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only item we have on our agenda this evening is the 2017-21 Capital Improvements Program.
Great.
And I've asked staff if they would take this for us. Please.
Sure. This is the resolution to approve that budget. One of the reasons we do it separately from the operating budget in the spring is that we're able to plan out any bids for roadwork and be able to get into the market more quickly and save money. We've always done it in the fall, and I think that has paid off. There was one project that Trustee Kamer questioned relative to the parking lot over at Rozika. That is still in there, but we are putting some information together about the different options that we looked at, and the board can make a decision later, but we left it in if the board would like to go ahead with that. So, we should have that for you soon, Trustee Kamer.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any motion, and then a second, and then questions.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2016.
Dash 103?
103. Dash 103. A resolution adopting the 2017-21 Capital Improvements Program.
Second.
By Trustee Danny, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will... Is there any discussion?
When you guys bid these projects out, do you guys also bid the engineering work?
Yes, we do, and we bid that separately, do we not?
Just to be precise, sometimes we'll do an RFP, where professional services not actually bid it. But usually, depending on the size, there's an RFP process.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my questions. I just want to make sure that we're not only going with the lowest bidder when it comes to the projects.
It's a very good question. I would say also add to what Attorney Moraz said, it would depend precisely on the kind of project it is, too. For example, the MFT projects that you're familiar with, the engineering we do in-house, but, you know, some of the other projects that you'll see in the capital budget, we would have to have outside help. We would bid that out, like, Trustee Moraz says, we... Or, I'm sorry, Attorney Moraz said, we'd use RFP process.
That saves the village some money when we do the engineering work in-house, then?
Yes, certainly.
I just want to make sure, I know water rates might be going up, we're building a new police facility, just trying to... Every opportunity to save money, and if it's in the engineering end of projects, I just try to be aware of that. That's all.
Anything else? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Kamer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
My motion carries.
Mr. President, we have nothing else this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Danny. Next item we have in this evening is License and Ordinance Committee for Chairman Aaron. She's absent, there's nothing under her committee this evening. Next, we have Police and Health Committee, Chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's nothing on the agenda for this evening.
And finally, for the standing committee reports, we have Public Works Committee, Chairman Kamer.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also have nothing under Public Works this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman Kamer. That does it for our standing committee reports. Next item we have is new business. One thing I would request that you, the rest of the trustees, do is keep a hold of these, so she doesn't have to reprint all this RLE.
It's a good idea.
So, when you get your next packet, keep these bound.
I find fault with that. I was taking that home to wrap my Christmas gifts.
There's enough of it there, Ray.
You can.
How many other new business? I would just wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a Happy Holidays. With that, I will... We will be moving directly into a, an executive session prior, our post, our committee. So, just the general audience knows, after committee, we'll be moving into executive session this evening pursuant to Section 2C1 of the Open Meetings Act. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn our regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Carbonaro, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Kamer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.